Get everything in order to submit. They haven't submitted their plans or anything yet. But that, the Mark II expansion is a sixty-two million dollar part of the project. And like I said, they've got three different projects going on. The tank farm is going in right now. We're doing all the structural inspections and everything that. I got a phone call today on the warehouse where they've got the building up now. And it's a bolted-together building. So we receive all the torque inspection reports and everything from the engineers in the labs and everything like that. But that, and it's gonna be a very fast-paced project because they've got a big contract that they're working on with this new pipeline coming through. So it's gonna be, it's gonna be a big boost for Prairie View.
Any questions? With, they were on the agenda maybe three months ago in reference to something that they didn't get that thing through?
Oh, yes.
Yes. The height?
Yeah. Yeah, but we did a sound balance and that sort of thing. On item five, Chief Lopetegui had a brief visit this weekend, just starting to come down again with policy. And I'll let you touch on that in the PBPD report. But again, just wanted to let the residents know that we've got a new chief coming on. His start date for our discussion over the weekend should be about December forty-third. Just in making the relocation from Dallas and Dallas Police Department and what have you. Councilman Jones?
Oh, no, that was my question.
Okay, go ahead, sir.
Mr. Mayor, may we move item number twenty-five to the House?
Sure. Second. Okay, so we probably moved the second item, item twenty-five, we moved that. You've heard the motion, ready for the discussion? Any readiness? All those in favor say aye. Let the record show us unanimous. Item twenty-five, discuss and take action on residents' water billing issues and contact with ABR Building Assistant. ABR, come on up.
Well, our ABR representative didn't talk, but we talked, we had been hearing citizens talking about some of our water billing issues. And the reason which we've been hearing a few guys' concerns with other town hall. All the council was giving a short presentation and packet of what was delivered at the town hall. Even Mr. Durham and our USW water representative had recommended that we take stuff in this direction. As we talked about planning for the future, I think this would be a great first step. And our water billing system headed into the future. And I would like you to tell them more about the ABR building system.
Yeah, so thank you for having us again. I did want to say off the subject a little bit that I've been doing this for twenty years. And I've been to a lot of council meetings and mudboard meetings. I've never seen a more engaged community, and it's actually very refreshing. I don't see a lot of communities engage as much as you guys do. I just think it's cool. So they're normally empty rooms, so it's nice. So again, thank you for considering us. We have been doing business in Texas specifically for sixty years. My grandfather started the company. We started in the tax business. So ABR stands for Ad Valorem Records. Ad Valorem Texas is how we got started. And then we moved into utility billing as more and more of our customers asked us to develop stuff for that. So this is certainly not something new for us. We're clearly a stable organization. Been around as long as we have. We've had customers almost as long as that. So US Water, who suggested that you use us, has been using us for, since they broke into Texas from Florida. And we work with about six hundred and fifty different municipalities all across the United States. We even have a few customers in Kenya and Nigeria as well. Mostly for water billing, but we do have some electric and gas billing customers as well. So our product is a SaaS-based solution, so it's cloud-hosted. And with it, your city administrators or clerks would be able to use. We would host the software for, on behalf of the city. And they could access it from anywhere that they wanted, even home, anywhere that has internet. And of course, produce billing, post-payments, help customers with service order-related issues, leaks, issues like that. But the audit systems that are in place will help, I think, with some of the improper, not improper, but billing issues. That it's my understanding you've been experiencing with your current software. So there's a lot of query and analytics that you can run on the data, which will help you catch problems before the bill is produced and goes into a consumer's hand. And then, of course, your residents can also pay online, pay over the phone via an automated system, pay in person. There's various different ways that they can pay. And then, of course, we also do the mail, the bill printing and mailing service as well. We print about seven hundred thousand water bills a month. So that's kind of the general. I could go on for hours if you wanted, but that's the general make-up of what we do, so.
Councilman?
Is there any kind of increase that's gonna affect the citizens for this software or for using this company?
It's my understanding, and you guys would have to correct me, of course, that there was budget consideration currently in the budget for purchase of it. So the residents shouldn't see any cost outside of that. So there are convenience fees related to making a credit card payment online. That's it.
And that's something that we currently...
Correct. That's my understanding.
What I'd like to do and pick it up on Councilwoman Williams is to get with you and have you do a comparative analysis of what we're charging our customers now and what we're paying Quick Water. And then that way we can at least take a look at just the financial component. The service still may be higher, it's better, it still can be better. We just want to know what the numbers look like and enough.
Sure.
It sounds good. Councilman Jones?
I move that we approve the budget contract as that was already within our budget limits for ABR.
Second.
I'm sorry, could you clarify that motion?
I move that we approve the budgeted contract. So now, well, J.J. provided, well, Mr. J.J. provided us a synopsis of what our budget would look like.
He's included the budget.
So I...
Yeah, the software, the new software is included.
So I would just make the motion that we approve ABR.
The actual contract itself?
No, to acquire the new software.
To acquire the new software instead of software that's already included to our budget.
Understood. So you're going to enter into a contract with them?
Yes, ma'am.
Without me looking at the contract? Just want to make sure you know that? I've never seen anything.
You're simply approving, you're simply purchasing software.
No, 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 approving a contract is not purchasing software. We can purchase software without getting into a contract because it is a separate product that I'm calling for. You can get the ABR software without getting into a contract?
No, you gotta, you do have to enter in with a contract.
Yeah, a contract with the software.
Then we'll have to have it approved.
So the software is approved and...
Well, they're gonna be your software consultant. They're purchasing your software.
Correct.
And then you're gonna be the software consultant.
Like Quick Water is. But there's a contract involved that I guess we're just seeing for the first time?
I, still I don't see it.
No, well, we just, I just received it, so.
Oh, yeah.
Councilwoman Williams?
So Ms. Alexandra, Judge Alexander went to go get copies because she brought three. We had two from the other meeting, but we have the attorney now. People need to see the contract. I thought that Corey sent two.
Oh, I see, yeah.
So there's two things. One, it is a software change, like we were telling the citizens who came out to the town hall meeting. Quick Water's our software. We're wanting to move from Quick Water to ABR. Inside of that, inside of the contract, there's some services that we either need to vote on, whether we want those services, like them mailing out the bills or keeping that in-house. And so there's some things that we need to go over. So if we can give her five to ten minutes so she can hit on those high points in that stack in front of you. Once we get a copy, I think we'll all be on the same page because this is the things that she talked about at the town hall.
But are you still stating it should be voted on the same day?
Oh.
Without the...
No, 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 I'm saying that, that we, that she talked about the highlighter points. So the attorney still needs to see it, but then we don't want to have to have the discussion next time it comes back. All right, so I'll just send my own motion.
Okay, so you want to touch on the highlights or the... Are you familiar with Quick Water altogether?
A little bit, yeah, yeah. So the highlights, I would say, compared to what you're doing now is, A, it's my understanding that, I certainly wouldn't say that it's been characterized that you're short-staffed by no means, so don't hear me say that. But I do think that by using our software and allowing us to mail out your statements on your behalf, we'll be able to free up some of your personnel time for customer service. And having us just do those back-office duties would really help give her some time, more time to do that. So I would say that's the highlight. I don't know what you're paying for that service right now. I went ahead and proposed based on the quantity that you have, thirteen hundred around a month, and what our price for that would be. But of course, once you look at what you're paying, if we need to make some adjustments there, you just gotta let me know. We can work on that. But, you know, overall, I would say the highlights are, the software is the cutting edge, so it's the latest technology versus what you're using now. It's a lot of steps back from that. And that will allow you, again, more efficiencies in auditing that the software is doing. Ensuring that, ensuring that you're catching billing errors before they go out. I would say that's, that would be one of the biggest improvements that you're gonna have, you're seeing from it, so.
Counsel, have a question?
Yes. Counsel, if you look at this right here, this information is the information that the city staff is exalder. Ms. Johnson and Ms. Bryan pulled together, give us some information in reference to Quick Water. So the analysis that the mayor asked ABR, do they should do it off of this? This is some information from Quick Water. And then what are we paying quarterly? How much it costs us? So if you look at your proposal, there's two things. They're asking us to approve the amount eleven-five. That is for the training and conversion. They talked, can you talk about timeframes? Can we talk about that? So the citizens can know as far as when we transition. Some of the other pieces were the monthly pieces that we have to pay that we currently pay to Quick Water. The two items of concern was the, it was a thirty cent and a seventy-one, whoa, excuse me.
Yep, you have it right.
Thirty cent and seventy-one cent. Seventy-one cent is not something that we require to do. It costs them seventy-one cents to send out our bills and to do all that. Now, if we calculate the man, the person hours and the paper and the printing and the machine that you have...
And postage.
And the postage, I don't think we can get it under seventy-one cent. But that's why you have that additional packet that our staff put together. That's for the seventy-one cent that we can opt out of. The thirty-one cent is what is mandatory. The numbers we got when we had the town hall meeting from Ms. Durham, there's about eleven hundred customers, right under eleven hundred customers that we have. So it'd be eleven hundred times thirty cent. Again, right under five, six hundred dollars would be that monthly fee. But again, as far as changes, I will allow, with the Councilwoman Jones, or...
But to go back to my question, if we have it and budgeted within our budget...
What is the contract that Mr. Williams is talking about? Just to, we have time to talk about it. Yep, and like you say, not putting the financial component because of some...
That's what?
Yes, Councilman.
So since Attorney Griffin hasn't had a chance to look at it, I move that we table this in this agenda.
Second motion. It's been properly moved and seconded that this be taken up at the next city council meeting. Okay, you've heard the motion. Ready, let's go ahead.
All right, so if you, Counsel, if you go to terms and conditions, just the last piece that we, that we want to probably pay attention to. It's under the per-month, per-item monthly fees. That thirty cents is the first item, and then the seventy-one cents is the additional optional item. The other additional, the other things are optional things that we don't necessarily have to enter in at this, at this point in time. One of the things we would, again, if customers wanted to do e-check or some of those other things, there's a cost for that. And so we would need to talk about finding out if we have to pay, is it a, is it a monthly or is it an annual fee for the e-check?
So for the transactions, they're on, they're per-item. So it would be every time they occur. So it's not like a set monthly thing. Now, what you're probably talking about, though, is the payment portal and e-bill presentment. So customers can log in and view their past bills, set up for reoccurring ACH, set up for reoccurring credit card bill and pay those statements and pay their bill. That's a monthly fee of two hundred. Now, that would be the city. Correct.
And that addition, and those additional options are options to the citizens, to the customers who can use that?
Correct. They don't have to use it. They don't have to pay any fees. They can actually use the online billing and not pay anything. They just, once they make a payment, there's a transaction fee for each transaction. And then the U-receivables, on that, on that same page, U-receivables payment processing. So what that is, is the residents can walk into any place that takes, accepts Western Union and make a payment there. And it's turned into an electronic payment that's then presented to the city staff as a lockbox payment file, if you will. And then they would post it to the software. And it also facilitates the same for customers that use online bill pay, which is of course free. So if they want, say that you bank with Wells Fargo, you can go onto Wells Fargo and pay City of Prairie View. And it turns that into an electronic payment, which gets funded and posted within one to two business days instead of a paper check, which is seven to ten days. And that, that twenty-five cents is a fee to the city, not the resident, because that's a free payment option for the resident.
Again, Counsel, the two other things, there is a three, the agreement is for three years, the same amount of time as the agreement with USW. And then we have a thirty-days if we...
Termination.
Thirty-day termination. If you want to know what that thirty cents is for, if you go to the page that says software details, it itemizes everything. But the amount of money, upfront money that we'll have to pay, that eleven-five, that's for the training and data conversion. And if you could just talk about timeframe as far as...
Yes, thank you. Yep, so the transition would look a little like about a thirty-day transition period, but it wouldn't be going on for entire thirty days. So what happens is we would do a test run. So we would ask Quick Water for, for you guys, we'd request a test data file. You would then give it to me. I would run a test conversion, make sure that everything makes it over, that we balance. We would produce those to you guys, to the city, I'm sorry, the city staff. And then they would sign off that the data conversion was in balance. And then we would wait until you bill for that month, which I, it's my understanding is around the beginning of the month is when bills are produced. So when, when the next bill run was made is when we would do the live data conversion. So the actual time that we're doing live conversion is about two to four days.
Now, when you say we request from Quick Water, they send it to us electronically and where they report it to you?
That's correct.
Or we receive that?
Or they, or you can tell them you want them to send it directly to me. It's your record, so they have to send it how and where you tell them to.
Okay, now, I understand you mentioned you were cloud-based?
Correct.
And you take online payments?
That's right.
Okay, so your cybersecurity of our residents' information looks like what?
We do have an insurance policy that we can provide you. Is that what you're looking for? Or they're just security? We've never been hacked before, so, but never say never.
No, it wasn't been around today, the first time.
It's right.
The, what does, what do your security measures look like?
So...
You're securing the six hundred and fifty kinds?
Yep, so, so what we're doing from the OS side, and this is, you're gonna, you're gonna hit my pay grade here in a minute because I'm not a highly technical, I'm a software person. But I can get you, I can provide you guys with a write-up on our security policies. That's, that's not a problem. What I can tell you is that when it comes to customers' personal information, such as depending on what you collect and what you don't, not all cities collect social security numbers or driver's license numbers. Some do. That's all fully encrypted as soon as it's put into the software. So it's encrypted as soon, there's never a chance that if, even if we got hacked in that one second, that they would be able to get any personal information. And then, of course, because we process credit card transactions, we are fully PCI compliant. So we do go through that whole process every year to get that certification. And we are not storing credit card numbers at all. We actually store a token number. So the customer enters in their credit card number, and as soon as that number's entered into the portal, it is tokenized, what's called tokenized. And we take that token, send it off to the credit card processors themselves, which is Pace, one of the top three largest, big ones. And then they, they are then allowed to hold credit card numbers and things like that. So they, they process the transaction and send back yes or no.
Okay, so that, is that a part of the encryption process? When you send the, when you convert the credit card numbers in the manner that you set it off to Pace?
Into a token, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Now, what about the encryption for the other? Is it just general encryption? Or what you, like, when a customer goes on? They'll be able to go on and sign up for your service through you initially, or they still have to come to the city?
No, they can set up, all they need is a copy of their bill. And then they go on to the portal. They're, they would be required to enter in their account number, as it reads on the bill, their service address and their name. And we're doing a real-time validation. Then they would set up a user login and password, and then they would log in and be able to see. Nothing that they can have access to is sensitive. It's all usage, last bill amounts, their address, nothing, no phone numbers, no credit card numbers, no social security numbers, driver's license. None of that is stored at the portal level, so.
So with a new customer coming in to get watered our system here, how would they go from our front desk to your billing system? What's that process look like?
So...
They fill out an application here?
That's correct.
A new service?
They would set up an account.
Cut them on?
That's right. So they would set up an account here, here at the city. At that time, then, they would be able, so they, at that time, they would have an account number. And of course, their service address would be entered into the software, and then they could go online. They could walk outside and do it in the parking lot if they wanted.
When you say they will set up an account, they're filling out an application to get water service from us?
Right.
So our people have the form.
And they, they entered in.
Our people entered into your system?
That's right.
Okay.
Yes, sir. And then, once the account is in our software, all right, because our portal and our software, of course, integrated, they could then go on the portal from the parking lot and pay, make a payment, which they wouldn't have a bill yet, but, yeah.
Got you. So that's good, Councilwoman Williams?
Mr. Mayor, our process, for the citizens, our process doesn't change. It's actually gonna happen. Customers will be able to come in and walk through the door and set up service the same way. We're not changing our processes inside. The City of Prairie View will still manages this. The only thing we're doing is changing the back service. You know, the difference between using PayPal, I use this example, the difference between using Cash App and PayPal. We're changing from PayPal to Cash App, so it's really only back office. But the additional benefit is that you'll be able to log on and also be able to check, do some things with your account.
My question is, Attorney Sarah, would you need that and email the contract and email for...
I'm happy to email it to you directly.
Yeah, I'll, I'll chat with her.
And do you have my business card, right?
Yeah, yeah. No.
That's the, so you can do the analysis of what we currently are paying?
Oh, okay. So you just want like a side-by-side that kind of shows you?
Yes, the training for our people will be done onsite, your location, online, what?
It's whichever you prefer. So I think we discussed onsite, yes. We leave that up to our clients, whatever's more comfortable for them. Some of them find that they're too easily distracted if they're in their working environment. So it's hard to concentrate because customers are calling, and that's, of course, the first priority. So they prefer to come to our office and make sure that it's a classroom and they're, they're head down, but that's up to you. The rate doesn't change or anything like that.
Your office is on the cutting?
Yes, sir. It's not too far.
And one of the reasons why we were suggesting that they come here is so we can get multiple people trained and kind of go through. It's a, is it three days or two days?
We did a full week. We did propose a full week.
And so you may have, like, we know we have Ms. Durham, we may have someone else. We may want to have Ms. Bryan or Ms. Johnson, someone sitting in every, to get like the opening basic pieces. And so if we have to go to Houston, we may not, we may only be able to, or...
Send water.
Send over to people.
That's a, that's a good point. Okay, Councilman Jones?
Call for a court.
All those in the papers say aye?
Aye.
Let the record show us unanimous. Any opposed? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we move item number four to the House?
If they had told me, I would have...
Okay, if we probably moved the second item, that we moved...
It's my understanding that they were sending it to you prior.
All those in the papers say aye?
All right. I don't think you've ever heard this from you guys before. Okay, so, yeah, I just, I sent you a copy of it. Would you prefer it in Word so you can mark it up if you want? Okay, I'll do that. Okay, thanks.
Let me just sort of set the stage. Good evening, everybody. I'm here with President Trudy here. I have with me David Peter. David is the, your direct contact, your point of contact as a city engineer operating within Trilogy. And I have Jim Hicks with me. Jim's a new addition to the firm, counsel and pointy, some ideas of experience. And he's here to help support in this particular effort. So let me further set the stage by just saying that what you have in your hand is a draft review. We left it as a draft review because what we, and the whole intent of this is for process improvement. What we didn't want to do is to come to give to you a report without having dialogue with you guys. And the report itself, already being filed, create more questions than answers. And then the document itself doesn't do what it's intended to do, which is to improve the process. So what we hope you're gonna do with this is take this draft document, counsel, mayor, legal counsel, city secretary, read it. Let's talk about any comments you might have in regards to it. Let's make sure we get those comments addressed. Let's make sure we get what you want in this report. We're the experts on this, but you guys are very close to the community, and we want to know exactly what you want in this. We're gonna provide the technical expertise within this report. But what you're gonna find in this report, and I'll try to share with you, sort of how this report is set up. So we have an overview to start out with. I know you guys haven't had a chance to read this, so I'm gonna kind of go over it at a high level, sort of talk about the structure of the report. And we immediately go from an overview to a quick summary of all three properties. And that then is followed by sort of setting the basis for what the city engineer does, what the responsibilities of the city engineer are. We go through those, and then we go into a detailed discussion on each property. And then we wrap up the report with recommendations, which is what this is all about. This is all about process improvement. At the end of this document, you're gonna find several recommendations that we would like for the counsel and the mayor and folks to consider. And we'll be glad to help make those recommendations real if, in fact, you choose to move forward on those recommendations. Then you're followed by a couple of appendices, which have a bunch of pictures in it. And it also have all the ordinances that apply to what we've been doing. So that's sort of the setup of the report. But real quickly, I'll touch on the summary for each of the properties. For Panther Hill, we looked at some of the culverts, and we found that the minimum size required is fifteen inches. We saw no drainage issues with the, with the culverts that are there at the time. We saw that there are four entries to the property. We saw no issues with the access to the, the access to the property. What we were not able to determine, and this is an ongoing issue, was the civil drawings for the property, which addresses sort of the water sewer side of it and the detention bond side of it. I know we have made multiple attempts to get our hands on these civil drawings. I think legal counsel has made some attempts to get their hands on a legal drawing. I think the council has made several attempts to get their hands on a legal drawing. I think folks in the administration has made several attempts to get their hands on these civil drawings. That has not occurred yet.
Didn't I see an email, I think, when you just went, that said you had the civil drawings?
Yeah, we were sent a package of drawings from the developer that we thought were the civil drawings. We got those drawings. We started going through them, and they had everything but the civil drawings. So I spoke prematurely. It was a big package of drawings. I was, felt pretty comfortable that everything we needed would be in there. It wasn't in there.
And this was the package you say you received was from Panther Hill, just didn't have to...
Correct. That's correct. That's correct. We've received all the drawings for all the other property. We've done a four-week review of the other two. The outstanding property that's not completed is Panther Hill Civil. We have the architectural drawings of Panther Hill. We've had a chance to look. So we reached out to Mr. Lundacker as well. This has been frustrating to try to get our hands on civil drawings. As a matter of fact, what you're gonna find is that one of the recommendations is that the city needs to put in place some sort of a document control process or system by which you don't have... some sort of a document control process or system, but which you don't have this situation anymore. Those drawings should be able, you should be able to have your hands on those drawings. So that's going to be one of the recommendations in the, in the actual report. And let me just touch on, any questions?
Councilwoman Wallace, then, Jones.
Yes, were there any reasoning given onto why the Petill Department didn't have civil drawings for their own development?
No, we've just been, I, I called a stonewall. We called the developer, they said they were going to provide the drawings, they didn't provide the drawings. We started calling them back, and then they simply just stopped answering.
And you specified to them that you...
Specifically.
Councilman Jones?
Mr. Mayor, what, what has the process been like for developers in the past, since we didn't have this opportunity to see that recommended today? What, what has been, could you walk me through that process?
Well, we basically use the same process that was in place when I took office some, a little over three years ago. The, there would be two sets of structural, am I using the right term?
Civil and architectural.
Civil and architectural, and, no, the other, electrical, mechanical?
The MEP drawings, all that's part of what we, what I was going to say.
Okay, what's the other side?
The architectural drawings. What are we missing?
No.
No, no, that...
We, we had civil and something else. What's the other?
Right. Well, the others are civil, the other set of drawings are what Bureau Veritas deals with, which is what I call the building envelope.
Okay.
Architectural.
We need all those two.
Structural, mechanical?
Structural, mechanical, and architectural.
Yeah, those are not...
That's what I'm saying.
Okay, alright.
Okay.
We, we have all of those.
Well, we would, no, I'm picking up on that Councilman Jones question. We would receive two copies of those, and they would get FedEx... The structural, mechanical for Bureau Veritas.
Architectural.
Yes. And those, those three sets, one civil and two structural, mechanical, would come in. And if they came in early enough in the day, if they would be FedExed out. If not, they would be fed out, FedExed out first thing the next day. We were strictly a pass-through, we got them out here. So those two went to Bureau Veritas, and the civil went to engineer Lindecker at the time.
That's correct.
That was some, almost three years ago, when one of those plans first came in, shortly after I took office. And that was the, the process. And they were in touch with the engineers, architects, whomever, with the developer. And the city, in a sense, was out of it. So we put the project, we just passed through, and then it went to those respective professionals, because we didn't have it in-house. That's why we have folks like this.
So the developers never needed a civil, and Brian, uh, Councilman Brian, I know you met him sometime. So the city never asked for a civil, 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 um...
drawings?
Drawings.
Yes, we always had civil...